...meeting of the Floyd County Board of Education. Let the record reflect that I'm Lynda Gerhart, the board chair and president. I'm doing a roll call for the other board members to establish their presence. Keith Smallwood.
Here.
Steve Slone.
Yes.
William Newsom.
Present.
Chandra Varia. Let the record reflect that a quorum of the board members are present to conduct this meeting, which I am now calling to order. We will review our focus areas first. They are safety and health of students and staff, remain fiscally solvent, attendance of 94%, social, emotional well-being of all students and staff, post-secondary readiness, proficiency in all academic areas, ACT scores of 19.5. Let me remind you that if you want to speak, to sign the clipboard. And the board reserves the right to limit the amount of time to five minutes, depending, and that depends, of course, on how many speak, we may have to limit it to less. So if you haven't signed the clipboard, please do so. At this time, let's say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, let's have a moment of individual silent reflection as to why we are here. And of course, we're thinking about the children. Thank you. Let's also remember those, like I said before, our neighbors in Tennessee who have had a terrible, terrible time. The northeast states that are having a terrible time with the storms. And let's think of our troops and our U.S. citizens that are in Afghanistan, and let's pray for their safety. Thank you. The adoption of the agenda, do we have any changes, Ms. Shepherd?
No, there are no changes.
Okay. I've entertained a motion to adopt the agenda.
Dr. Veria.
Dr. Varia made the motion, second.
I'll second.
Second, Steve. And we'll do a roll call. Keith Smallwood.
Yes.
Steve Slone.
Yes.
William Newsom.
Yes.
Chandra Varia. And the chair votes yes. The motion carries. Do we have spotlight on staff and student community achievements?
Do I turn it off? Okay. I thought maybe I turned it off there. Tonight, we want to recognize one of our community champions, and I have a list of some amazing things that they have done for our students and our staff and our communities. But before these three hospitals combined under the umbrella of A R H, individually, they always said yes, whether it was Hollins', St. Joe's', or McDowell. I don't think I ever called on any of them that they didn't say, yes, we'll help. Yes, we can do this. We'll be here. They've come into our classrooms, they've been at our opening day events, they generally are true community partners. And then they joined, and now it's an even stronger force. The three Floyd County A R H hospitals will be providing telemedicine for students, faculty, and staff of John M. Stumbo Elementary, May Valley Elementary, Adams Middle, Betsy Lane High, Prestonsburg High, and the Renaissance Learning Center in this upcoming school year. Patients will be provided care by doctors from three Floyd County hospitals without having to leave the school. Telemedicine in schools not only improves access to care, but it promotes learning because it helps allow our students to stay in school for non-contagious illnesses, it can help improve attendance, reduce missed work time for parents, and it prevents the reduction in funding from state resources. Appalachian Regional Health Care has also partnered with Floyd County Schools to provide COVID vaccine clinics at all open house events at middle and high school for N112+. I believe they have been, they're going to cover 17 different open house events. And so far, to this point, approximately 50 people have been vaccinated. Recently, A R H Neurology made concussion education sessions available to all of our middle and high school coaches in Floyd County Schools, stressing the importance of seeking medical attention for students, when to return to play, and what to expect during recovery. The three A R H hospitals have also provided $20,000 to purchase the new scoreboard for Prestonsburg High School. And throughout the school year, A R H hopes to continue to provide mentorship opportunities to students, scrubs camps, A R H bowl games, awareness events at school events, additional sponsorships, health education in classes, and support for teachers at every possible opportunity. And that's why tonight, we wanted to recognize a true community champion in our three A R H hospitals. And I would like to ask the CEOs of Kathy Stumbo, Russ Barker, and Tim Hatfield, if you will come forward, please. I would like all the board members to please come and take a picture. And I also meant to, I didn't have it down, recognize Dr. Stumbo.
At this time, we have community comments to the Board of Education. Are there any students that would like to make comments? Parents, PTA, PTO. I'm assuming we've got parents here, so Kevin Spurlock.
Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. First off, Ms. Shepherd, the board members, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I want to congratulate Ms. Shepherd on being named superintendent. She is more deserving than superintendent's chair than anybody we've recently had. She works hard, she loves our kids, I know that firsthand. She's taught my children, and I know how much she loves our kids. So I want to congratulate the board on making a very quick super pick for our county and our kids. Secondly, I'm here to announce, as a now a former educator, a grandfather, a concerned citizen, and as a registered Floyd County taxpayer and voter, just as I could get up here and give you all sorts of data telling you how masks don't work, someone else could get up here and show the same type of data that says they do. And that's. Daily, a note for us all on Facebook, Twitter, so I don't want to waste the board's time with that. I'm here to ask that common sense be used. As a recent teacher, I saw firsthand how high school teenagers struggle to wear a mask mandate. As a teacher, I can attest to how hard it was for adults to do this as well, including myself. I spoke to several of my colleagues who shared the same concern with children they taught in the grade's category of eight. My question tonight is if all these people of different ages and different grades struggle with it, how can small children ages two through five be expected to not only do this all day, but also be trying to learn academically, socially, and emotionally? Common sense, and this is dead inherent policy. My grandson's mother could most likely get a medical waiver, but how would that make him feel among his peers who have a waiver? What about the other kids who need a waiver but couldn't get one for whatever reason? Who are their voices? I say you are, and I am, when it comes to their school and their education. Governor Monsieur Calhoun took the way out today by rescinding his mask mandate because the court felt it unlawful and not within his authority to do so. But before this, he had his puppets at the Kentucky Department of Education pass the mandate for the entire school year, and now he hides behind them. I asked the Floyd County Board of Education to be a leader and not a puppet. I asked them to challenge this mandate with all this power on behalf of our kids. I've been all out on that the majority of Floyd County would support you with this mandate. Be the voice we need you to be. Be the voice our children need you to be. For once, send the message to Frankfurt that they don't control us and that politics will not decide what is best for our students. Just a couple of years ago, it was decided to call our school and take busloads of teachers to Frankfurt to fight for their pensions. And I'm okay with that because I was a teacher too. But today, we need you to fight the same fight on behalf of our kids. Challenge this mandate. I don't ask for masks to be done away with, but I ask it to be the parents' choice. It's their children that they pay taxes to their schools, allowing kids to go to school without masks. My three-year-old grandson was accepted to Ed's Park early because he has challenges. There is no earthly way that he can wear a mask every day for every hour of school, no way at all. And to ask him to do so is unfair to him. We need you to step up for kids like this who need the services, who need the resources of our schools. We need you to step up for our children. God bless our children, God bless our teachers, our administrators, all of our staff, and also our parents this school year.
I'm not as good at this as my dad is, but I'll try. My name is Savannah King. I'm the mother of a three-year-old. Sorry, little boy. Whose name is Axel. Axel has a hard time communicating. Over the past year, we as parents have worked every day with Axel to get him Head Start ready. We enrolled him in the program First Steps. He met with his speech therapist two to three days a week. We put him in daycare full-time to get him used to interacting with other children his age. We worked every day trying to get him to overcome his sensory issues. And we even had tubes put in his ears so he could, so he could stop getting water in them and understand what we were teaching and saying to him. As a parent, we were excited to hear that Axel had received a spot in Head Start and would be going to Prestonsburg Elementary this upcoming school year. Shortly after, the governor declared his 270-day mask mandate for children over the age of two. Although the Supreme Court made him rescind that mandate, I'm still aware of the Kentucky Department of Education's mask requirement that is still in place. Axel doesn't learn like other children. Axel is a very visual learner. He has to hear. He has to be very hands-on for him to grasp what you are trying to teach him. Axel cannot learn in a mask. He simply just doesn't understand. We as parents have chose to unenroll Axel from Head Start. Thank you. Because we know that even though he has worked very hard to be ready, he sadly isn't because of a mask. I'm not here to bombard you with the scientific data of how dangerous masks can be for our developing children. I'm not here to make your job any more tough than it needs to be. I'm here as a mother who desperately wants her kid to attend Head Start but knows he physically and emotionally can't because of the mask mandate. I'm asking you to give Floyd County Schools a chance to be known as a school system who will stand up and be a voice for their students, especially the ones who don't have a voice of their own yet. I'm here as a mother because I want to give Floyd County Schools a chance to help my child grow as an individual. I'm here as a mother so I can look in my child's eyes and say I tried to advocate for And my rights as a parent to choose what is best for my child. I'm here as a mother because I know what is best for my child. I know he needs, I know what he needs and how he learns best. I'm here as a mother because I know that as a parent, I have the God-given right to say what I think is best for my child. I'm here as a mother, and for all the mothers, to say that it should be our choice whether we mask our children or not. I'm here as a mother pleading and praying that you will be brave enough to stand up for my child and all the children within your school system and challenge the K D E's mask requirement. I voted you in because I had hoped that when it came down to it, when it really came down to the children, whatever the situation may be, that you would be the ones brave enough to take a stand and fight for our children. I know your job has been tough this past year. I pray for peace of mind for all of you. I hope you will take my words into consideration and stand up to the nonsense that the K D E has put in place on our children. Don't let Axel's hard work go to waste.
Good afternoon. Can everybody hear me? Am I close enough? Okay. Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me the time to speak. I have notes. I have a lot of data, statistics, kind of like them. I don't really want to bore you with all that, I'm sure you know. So I'm going to skip around a little bit and kind of just speak from the heart. Like I said, my name is Amber Burt. I'm the mother of a student at Adams Middle School. I come before you today to have my voice, and frankly, the voice that many others heard. I am blessed to be a stay-at-home mother, and I have the time to come nonsensically plead with our elected officials to allow myself and other parents the sole decision-making over our children's health. So I guess the first question I want to pose to you is, what are the metrics? What are the metrics you are using to make the decision to have my child wear a piece of cloth for seven hours a day? What are the metrics you are using to decide to close schools and deny my child of a quality education and a normal childhood? Have you set the unrealistic standard of zero COVID? Is that the number we need to be at before children can be children again? If your answer is no, then what is it? What is your end game? There is no evidence that the masking of kids is effective, or for that matter, necessary. The CDC statistics on age as of August 18th, 2021, show that a grand total of people in the United States who have died under the age of 18 involving COVID, not just of COVID, but involving. That is the CDC's wording, not mine. So ages 0 to 17, which is a cohort of 73 million Americans, the grand total is 361. And although each of those are devastating, you cannot say that we are seeing a large uptick in the death of children. Now, I want you to imagine for a moment, it is 2008. A kid at the school has the flu. That kid transmits the flu to my child. Both parents responsibly keep their child at home. But did you shut down the schools? No, of course you didn't, because that would be silly. Although, in 2008, we had an outbreak of the swine flu. That particular epidemic was far more deadly for kids. That flu resulted in about 1,282 deaths in kids. Not one school closed its doors for weeks on end. Not one child was required to wear a mask. So is this truly for the kids now? And if so, does that mean that you hated kids then? Did their lives not matter that year? Of course not. Of course, that's not what it means. It meant that we realized that there was an implicit amount of risk that comes with living, and so we continued living. It also indicates that this is probably not about the kids at all. I will also note that if in 2008, I had sent my baby to school with a ridiculous cloth mask and told you that under no circumstances is she to take that off, you would have investigated me for Munchausen syndrome by proxy. You would have declared that it is cruel for me to mask my child to that extent because of my unreasonable fears. And you probably would have insisted that there was no way teachers could be expected to enforce such an asinine rule. And you would have been right. All we are asking is to go back to a time when we were not ruled by fear and we show a touch of common sense. So now I ask, are we doing this for the teachers? They should have all been vaccinated by now, or at least had the opportunity to be vaccinated. If they don't want to get vaccinated, then they can wear an N95. That's on them. They have obviously weighed the risk-reward of this situation, as most adults have, and have made their decision. I am in no way encouraging or discouraging anyone to get a vaccine. That is a personal choice. I am, however, saying that if you have decided that you are okay with the risk of not taking the vaccine, then it is not my child's responsibility to protect you from the consequences of that decision. These decisions are not rooted in data linked to the danger for children. We all know the danger for children is exorbitantly low, and the data does not exist. You are trying to scare the hell out of parents, and the stats do not bear it out. I do not think that you are bad people. I truly don't. I think that you all really care about our children. And I think deep down, when you look at a two-year-old with a dirty mask on, that you know that it's wrong, and you know that it's cruel. I could go on and on with stats, and the dangers of masking children, and the damage it does. But I don't need those stats. Because I am her mother, I know, and any of you that are parents know, that in your gut, you know this is wrong. Now's the time. You have a moment. You can show courage, and you can put an end to this madness. And you can be the leader of the state for Kentucky kids that says enough is enough. It ends in Floyd County.
Brenda, are you speaking for F C E A? Are you speaking for Brenda?
Good evening, and thank you, Ms. Shepherd and board members, for the opportunity to speak on behalf of F C E A. What a wonderful day it's been to be part of Floyd County Schools. Thank you, Ms. Shepherd, our board members, and our central office team, and technology team, for fabulous opening day program. I love to see our kids be part of this event. Great job to the Floyd Central J R O T C, Ms. Cheyenne Keith Lee from Betsy Lane, and Seth and Xander Dingus from Prestonsburg Elementary. Now, I know Seth and Xander, and they are such a joy to teach. And I wanted to share a short update from F C E A. One of the things we're working on is with our frisky centers in the high schools to buy hygiene items for our students that may need that. You know, we're so glad that the board is providing basic supplies, and we were trying to think of something else that we could do for students that might need that. We've also established a website and a Facebook page for F C E A to share information and updates. And K E A offers a lot of professional learning opportunities to its members for free. One of the great programs is called Savvy, and if they have student loans, they can, they can pretty much save thousands of dollars. Also, if their child has student loans, they can save as well with that program. So it's a great value for your dues. I want to thank the board. I don't know if I did last time, because I've had two hip surgeries this summer. But I want to thank you for raising the pay for all our employees across the board. It's just amazing. I know that Angela had asked that for, asked for that for a long time. Just thank you for everyone that made that happen. And now we have the opportunity to get a $1,500 stipend and get better for kids with social-emotional learning with Dr. Sweeney. And that was a great training today. I saw over 400 of our employees participated in the training with Dr. Sweeney. And as the F C E president, I want to celebrate the wonderful work our people do every day in Floyd County. And I'm just a call, text, or email away. If I can help anyone in any way, I will do it. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you for speaking, and thank you, Mr. Spurlock, for your kind words. Like you said, we have as many families on both sides of this debate, so we know there's lots, as you said. And although the governor rescinded the mask mandate of the 30 days today, we still do have the Kentucky Board of Education's emergency regulation of masking, which is 270 days. As we currently stand today as well, we cannot jeopardize certificates of educators by not following that regulation by the Kentucky, the state school board. And so my recommendation to our board is for us to follow the emergency regulation is for us to follow the emergency regulation as we are today to help us get back to in-person learning.
How does it jeopardize their certificate? Do you mind explaining? That's just a single question. Do you mind explaining?
That, as of now, that is the law for us to follow the regulations of the Kentucky School Board Association. And so that Kentucky School Board's emergency regulation, that is still in place.
But it's not law. That's a recommendation. It's a regulation. It's not law.
It's a regulation. You're correct.
Yeah, what about House Bill 1? Can we adopt our own plan on the local level like they said?
Do we have anybody that wants to speak on SBDM Council? Classified employees? Other certified employees?
Can we note before I leave that when they were all socializing before the camera went on, their masks were off? Or being worn improperly? So just so everybody knows, you were being played. You are being played.
And plus, you can't even hear with passion. You can barely hear what you're saying. So that's true in education. You need to see people's mouths moving. You need to build an audio voice model.
Principals Association, members of the Board of Education. Ms. Shepherd, did you want to make a statement? Yeah. I wanted to just thank Dr. Chandra Varya for her donation for the renovations over in our boardroom. I know that we're not there tonight. We usually are. But I wanted to thank you again for that donation and those renovations of our beautiful boardroom. And also, I wanted to thank Marion Monument Company and Derwin Marion for the granite nameplates for the new board members, myself, and Jonathan Shaw. So they donated those as well. Dr. Varya, I think you had something you wanted to say.
Okay. I was the lucky one. I was so easily here before already. Lots of patients call me. I say patients, because a lot of my patients. This time, I am more emails. And most of the women except one father. And I was lucky. They all believe in vaccination, mask, safe distance. And I asked them to come board meeting. The one doctor from Highland, because she was right here, appreciated to go for C-section. So she just left. But, you know, they all wanted their children to come in person in the school. And I really liked it also. Small children, one year, we did go without. And if we do this year, kids will not come next year. They never understand that school is important. And online, you know, seven, eight, nine years old, it just... I know, I'm too old for that, and it's too difficult for me to learn also. But anyway, so I explained that we have a hybrid, virtual, and in-person. And lots of people apply for that. But there is one explanation. I explained that once you become virtual, whole semester, you have to stay there because we keep special teachers for you, special staff, and you cannot change everything. So I asked them to come in the meeting, call our superintendent. Her door are always open, and we can do that. I was just lucky. They all believe in safe precautions. And we will keep open, hybrid, virtual, and in-person also. We all discussing about that.
Do we have other public comments? If not, we'll move on. Action of Special Report, Student Learning. I assume that we don't have anything. Action of Special Report, Student Support. Receive the report of Superintendent. Are there any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion with...
I'm going to do A, B, A, B together. Just wait a minute. Okay? Receive Utility Report for Stumbo Elementary School. Any questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion for four and five, A and B.
I'll make that motion.
And Keith made the motion, and Steve seconded. I'll do a roll call. Chandra Varya. William Newsom.
Yes.
Steve Slong.
Yes.
Keith Smallwood.
Yes.
And Linda, your heart votes yes. The motion carries. Okay. Receive the report for Ross Tarant, Architects About Roofing Options For The Bus Garage. Do we have a representative? Could you not hear me?
Hi. Very nice to meet you all and be here today. It's good to meet everybody. And I gave a report to Linda about the roof, so that I know she shared with you. And I'm here to answer any questions you have about that, and I don't know where to start, so.
Pardon? Could you repeat that, please?
Oh, sorry. I gave a report on the roofs. Do you want me to go over the whole report, or do you have specific questions that you want to ask about this report?
Yeah, look at... Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
A little bit, yeah.
Lots of people don't want to hear me. Looking through your report. Looking at the difference between 6A and 6B, what would be your professional recommendation?
Let me remember what the difference was for one second, please.
Starts on page three. I think it got louder. And then page four.
So the difference is the kind of insulation that you would put under the roof. The Skyliner roof insulation is a little bit of a higher-end insulation. The Saginaw bag is really what the typical insulation that you see under a metal roof, which is Saginaw is exactly what it sounds like, right? You string it over the stringers, and you kind of see it from the bottom.
Is that what we have presently?
Yes. Yes, that is what you presently have. Either one is a good roof system, and is going to give you a 20-year warranty on that roof system, but the insulation is just a little bit different.
$10,000 difference? More expensive. That's really the...
Is that 6A or 6B?
6A. Right.
Do we have discussion on the other end there, Junior or Dr. Varya?
I would recommend 6A.
But...
Better answer.
I think we're in agreement.
You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We should accept 6A.
I second that.
Steve has made the motion that we go with 6A. And Junior has seconded. Let's take a roll call. Keith Smallwood.
Yes.
Steve Slong.
Yes.
Junior Newsom.
Yes.
Chandra Varya. And the chair votes yes. The motion carries.
All right. Thank you. If you guys have any other questions about roofs, just let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I need for you to take a look at the consent items. Do we have any that we need to pull to discuss? Doctors?
Yeah, let me say...
We are. I'm going to pull that.
Adam FF?
Do you want to pull FF?
I think we'll be a presentation now.
They do a presentation? Okay. But we're pulling.
We don't have to do that right now. Do you want to pull on everything?
No, I'm going to pull some. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and pull H, K, and O, E, F, and Q.
Slow down. H.
K and O, E, F, Q. You want to go ahead and F? FF and X. Okay, we're going to start with...
You want to pull for a vote on that?
No, no, I'm going to... We'll discuss it then. We'll do it all. Okay, E, let's see, H, K, and O have to do with the school trips. And although I'm not opposed to the school trips, I think that we need to put some restrictions on those in that if there should be a travel ban, the virus numbers go up. You know, regulations as to the virus is what I'm talking about. We don't want to send kids to other states where there's surges or, you know, whatever. So I think that even though we may pass those school trips, I think everybody needs to know that we may also have to cancel those school trips. So that was my concern. E, F, and Q have to do with fundraisers outside the school. I think we had one more, but it was within the school.
On the... Let's go back to the trips for a second. If they do go on the trips, and if they come back, and it's mandated that they have to go into...
Quarantine.
Quarantine?
Quarantine. Thank you. Will that be implemented, and that would mean an actual quarantine, that they're not going to be able to practice? And they will understand that? Is that correct?
Yes, that is, and I'll restate that. The concern is that if these three trips are approved tonight, that if there is a ban by the governor, that there's no out-of-state travel, of course, they would not be traveling. If they do travel on one of these trips, and they need to quarantine when they return, that that means these teams would not be practicing or playing at any level.
Will there be a school bus, or will they transport themselves, or have a...
I know with the trip, the Myrtle Beach trip is a little bit off. That is, what, a December trip? No, that is March. And there's a Las Vegas trip. But the September 10th trip to Tennessee is... I do believe that the principal at Prestonburg High School is planning to use the waiver for parents to transport their own children on that trip as we currently speak to cut down on the transportation, on public transport, and possibly mixing the kids and spreading the virus.
So I guess what we're saying is, if we vote for these tonight, it will be under condition. Okay, let's move. I want to look at E, F, and Q, having to do with fundraisers. Three out of four had to do with outside the school fundraisers. And again, if we vote for these tonight, I think that parents need to be very cautious about where they allow their children to go and wear their mask and observe conditions that need to be observed in dealing with the public. So I'm not opposed to fundraisers at all, but I think there needs to be some caution. And there should always be caution when kids are out doing anything like this. Are there any other comments? Okay, Dr. Varya, you want to make a comment about X, which is, "Consider Approved To Place Existing Girl Softball Scoreboard Located At Betsy Lane High School Into Surplus." You want to make a comment about that?
I want some more information about that.
Say it again. Say it a little bit louder.
I'd like to have more information about that.
More information about that.
Otherwise, we can table and discuss. May I get more information, and we can pick the next one.
Joe Morrison, do you have any additional information on the X that was considered or approved to place the existing girl softball scoreboard located at Betsy Lane High School into surplus?
We're having a real hard time hearing.
Okay. Dr. Chander's just asking if you have any additional information on that scoreboard that's being surplus for Betsy Lane that they're recommending.
We can't hear you. I think it says no knowledge.
Is this, I'm looking, I'm trying to open it up. I think this is the girl softball scoreboard that they're proposing to surplus and donate to David's School.
They are getting a new scoreboard. I do know that. And the existing scoreboard, we may have to pay somebody to take it away. Because it's not very good at all.
The issue paper says with district and community sponsorship, Betsy Lane High School will be purchasing a new scoreboard for girls softball. There's no explanation of where it's going to go to or anything like that.
If you read the information we have, they say the cost will be shared... by community in the district. Usually we never share, the district never share the cost. Because there are lots of schools need that. And if district support there, then board member has to pass that. Well, I don't think district can do, department can do ten thousand seven hundred fifty dollars without board approval. So if you don't, we don't have the information yet.
So they're proposing to surplus and donate it to David's School?
District going to pay ten thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. And, and, and district pay to get, so what fund is coming? And then it has to come to the board before we pass that. Right, Lena? We are going to wait until they, do you think we can, district, your district may like just a fund or something? Can we pass the ten thousand dollars without the board permission?
This is saying the budgetary impact is nothing. That there's none on this. Uh, Mr. Rose, do you have any additional information on it either? Okay. Okay, yeah, because it's saying budgetary impact to the district is none.
Uh, they, they're getting this donated, so it's no cost to the board at all.
No, no, no. Ten thousand seven hundred fifty dollar district going to pay. It's not free. Because I inquire here. Do you want me to give information?
Okay, let's just, let's just table that until we can get more information. Okay, the next we have is FF concerning, "Consider approved base security bid for school access control systems." Do we have a representative?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm John Hunt, and this is Jason King. I'm your chief safety officer, and Jason King works in our technology department. He is our security tech lead. We're here to answer any questions you may have.
It says, it says here that... What, what's the RBH access? What, what, what does that mean?
I'm sorry, can you speak up, please?
RB, RBH access? I see that... Is that a brand or...?
Uh, yes, that's the brand name of the access control system that we currently have that we're expanding upon.
Is that what the state recommends or is that what the company put forward?
Uh, it's, uh, it's not really a recommendation on brand, only that we're trying to maintain a, uh, a constant brand name throughout the system so we have compatibility. Because we already purchased, uh, already purchased access for a few schools, so we're just sticking with the same brand so that we have the same management system behind it.
So I can get this straight. Does, does this, does this include actual access control, which is the button, face comes up, or is this just the card reader? Can you repeat that, please?
We can't hear you.
Can you repeat that, please? I cannot hear you.
Yeah, well, we can't hear you.
The, uh, the existing, for instance, Adams Middle School, I'll just use them. They have an access control. You push a button, they can release the door. Does this, does this include that or is this just card readers?
This particular project is just the card reader and the door sensors for each exterior door.
So this does not, so this does not include the push button?
No, all, all of our schools are in compliance with that.
Exactly. So we, we're just needing card readers?
Yes. Our three, our three high schools currently have the card swap access control system. We are expanding this utilizing the funds that have been allocated to us.
Exactly, yeah.
And, and we've given you a breakdown with each of the schools, so that's our nine remaining schools that do not have the system.
And, 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 and the ones, except Floyd Central, if I'm correct, are all RBH?
Two.
That's correct, yes.
Only two?
But you said card readers only, uh, on our existing schools, every one of them has a push button at the front door and that's all they have.
Right, right.
So we're talking about, you know, complete lock hardware, everything, wire pulls, the, the whole lot.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, okay.
And the spirit of this, in accordance with the school safety law, is that we are reducing the amount of key core locks in our campuses. So we're going to reduce those down to a strategic number. Uh, that's something we can share. I'm, I'm not comfortable saying in a public forum here what we are doing from a safety standpoint, but we can address that individually with each one of you.
Exactly.
Uh, but the spirit of it is to reduce those so we can eliminate, uh, almost all of our old keys that are circulating out there. And then we can control our doors with a card swap system that can be programmed digitally.
Yeah, you'll know who went in and out, et cetera, yeah.
Exactly.
And we know the time they enter and exit, right, with that system?
I'm sorry, Ms. Shepherd.
We know the time that they entered and exited our buildings with that card system?
Yes, we will be able to monitor who enters our schools, at what location, what door they entered, what time. And you can program the cards to restrict access. For instance, from seven AM to five PM, Monday through Friday. Uh, you can restrict the access that our coaches have to our schools. You can designate what door they have access to. Uh, the, the capabilities are endless when you want to talk about how much you want to restrict who has access to your schools. And the system, the system generates reports. So if you have, uh, say, you request a report for an employee's comings and goings over a specified amount of time, you can give that to me and in seconds I can give you, you know, a month, three months, or a year report on that employee.
So you, so, so this is, if I'm looking at this correctly, it's, it's, it's up to four doors at each school or is, could it be more than that? I may have seen something in there that once at nine.
Yes, the, the, in short, what we recommended to each one of our principals before we went out and consulted with them, Mr. King and I sat down and kind of assessed with what we thought would be strategic locations. And then each school was applied with that formula. Now, each school has almost the same number, I believe. South Floyd may have one less than what is the common theme throughout the district. And ROC has considerable less, but those are based on the size of the campus and the, the actual layout of the campus. Uh, and what we, aside from addressing our front entrance and our food service entrance and our one gymnasium door, we then moved throughout the campus and strategically placed those in accordance with what, because most of these are elementary schools, uh, with the exception of, uh, Adams Middle School. So we looked at what were going to be strategic locations for, for instance, a reverse evacuation in the event that we were on one of our playgrounds or given the current climate we're in or out, we could be outside on a mass break. So we wanted to provide strategic locations that we could safely and quickly get back into school if needed.
Exactly, okay.
Are there any more questions or comments? We have a request to table that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you both for all the information. It's very helpful.
Thank you, guys. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
There's been a motion to table that. Uh, Steve made the motion, Keith seconded it. Do I have any more discussion or questions? If not, Chandler Varia, yes, no, yes? Junior Newsom?
No.
Junior? We're vote, we're voting on that, to table that.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, alright. Steve?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion carries. Okay, I also want to pull EE. "Consider approved the Floyd County School District return to school plan." And after our, uh, public comments, I think that, uh, Ms. Shepherd would entertain any questions from the board about that. So we can make sure we're clear on the regulations from the Department of Education. Are there any questions about the return to school plan?
Is that, is, is the last thing she was mentioning, is it mandated or is it a recommendation?
No, we have a Kentucky School Board emergency regulation for masking for two hundred and seventy days and that is still in place. The governor's mask mandate of thirty days, I do believe, was rescinded today. But we still have the Kentucky School Board, uh, emergency regulation to, for masking for two hundred and seventy days.
Is Annette here? Annette, do we not, what are the, the regulations about a waiver if a child cannot wear a mask because of a condition? Is, are there certain conditions?
Come on down, Annette, if you would, because it's so hard to hear.
I understand that a two-year-old would have a terrible time or a three-year-old would have a terrible time wearing a mask. And, uh...
Although I will, if I can comment, uh, Madam Chair, and as you know, I just stepped away from being early childhood director for eleven years. And last year, we had students that were able to wear masks and wore masks on buses of those ages of three and four. We do not currently have two-year-olds enrolled. But, uh, that is possible based on my past experience last year with those children.
Lots of times, children inform better than the older kids do, yes?
Um, the regulation states that if a child has a disability or it would be detrimental to their medical condition to wear a mask, that a mask can be waived. So they wouldn't have to wear a mask.
And that, that would be obtained from a doctor or...?
Yes.
Okay.
And usually the, the doctors don't have any problem writing that for children that have disabilities, you know, especially speech and hearing impaired. But we do have, uh, we bought, last year, we bought masks that are clear in the middle so that students can see the teacher's mouth move, the teacher can see theirs, if they're able to wear that type of mask. But if they're not, if they're hearing or speech impaired, um, or they have respiratory difficulty or a medical condition, that will prevent that and we would be able to obtain those waivers and they wouldn't have to wear a mask.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, it is possible to get a waiver from the doctor?
Yes.
And it, and if it is, if, if a child's having trouble with speech or some type of development?
Yes.
Uh, they may be, more than likely, can get the waiver.
Yes.
You, we also have clear masks?
Yes, we do.
So that, uh, the child can see or... Yeah, the teacher's speaking.
Yes.
So that's not a lot.
We purchased those last year. Um, and, you know, we, uh, since last year, there's been a, you know, there's a lot of new masks that have been designed and developed so we can purchase more, uh, anytime, you know, for those type of students. You know, we try to accommodate any medical condition or anything that would, would cause a mask to be detrimental to a student. Um, and that also does for our staff. Um, if we have a staff person that is, uh, that has a disability, that the doctor would write a statement saying that would be detrimental to their medical condition, then they would also be waived from wearing masks.
And if I can add that we do currently have a mask, uh, mandate for public transportation, which includes our buses by the U.S. Department of Transportation. So we do have that in effect, in effect. We've had that in effect, I think, since maybe June or the beginning of July, but that is still in effect.
So if they boarded a bus, they would have to have a mask?
Yes.
Yes.
Unless they have a medical condition that would prevent them from wearing one and we have a waiver in place. You know, if we can use our special needs buses and things for children that, you know, do not, they can't wear a mask, then that would be better than putting them in with the general population on the bus. But if we do have to put them into the general population on the bus, then we would seek them so that they are safe in the front or in a position where they're not in the back of the bus or in the middle of the bus.
They should have had you speak earlier, I think.
I wanted to.
I, I wish I'd called on you.
I, I think, um, you know, in, in listening to a lot of parents, I think there's just a lot of misunderstanding
Right.
as to what we're able to provide.
Okay.
Um, you know, I, I wanted to tell that mother that was crying. I mean, she broke my heart.
That one did.
I wanted to tell her that we, all we would need, you know, was a waiver and we would make revisions for her child to, to come to Head Start. I would never want a child not to be able to come to school.
I also, knowing, uh, how schools and classrooms functioned last year during the pandemic and the outstanding jobs that they all did, uh, there were mask breaks. I mean, I happened to have my office last year inside a school. And mask breaks are taken as needed. And I think we saw more probably mask breaks of the younger kids. But the early childhood students, of course, none of our students wear masks when eating. They don't wear masks when they are, uh, taking a, a nap or on their cots. And everybody has built-in mask breaks for their students. When they go to the restroom, for instance, in early childhood, they, that's a mask break for them. They're in the bathroom by themselves, you know, inside the classroom. So, uh, I felt like there was, you know, adequate mask breaks scheduled in the daily schedule for all grade levels.
Annette, I do have one question. Um, on the second page of it, at the end, what is the second page of it? It's on the, on the last page that you gave us. Says fully vaccinated people who have come into close contact with someone with COVID-19 should be tested three to five days following the date of exposure and wear a mask in public indoor settings for fourteen days or until they receive a negative test result. It's my understanding, um, I saw something from the CDC today, and that's, and that's the only reason why I'm asking this, is that they recommended, uh, that you, it was given, it was given out by one of the health departments in one of the counties, uh, in central Kentucky. And it was something from the CDC saying that they recommended that you wait five days that you could get a, a false negative at three to five. So should we take the three to five out and put it at five days and go with what the CDC's latest thing is or, or what?
Well, that's, that's a common problem for us because the, the CDC and the Department of Public Health, it's like almost every other day, they're updating and they're changing. Um, when I'm speaking to someone about testing, I recommend personally that they wait five to seven days because if they test on the third day, sometimes that's too early. And like you said, they'll have a negative test and then on the fifth to seventh day, they'll test positive. Uh, but we are also looking at, um, and I wanted to, to tell the parents that too tonight, that, uh, we're also looking at being able to do our own testing. Um, we will, right now, um, it's very feasible for us to do symptomatic testing, uh, in our schools. Uh, the, uh, Big Sandy Healthcare Nurse Practitioners and the nurse that we have, there's three locations, they've always been able to do COVID testing since, uh, they started testing. So they were doing COVID testing last year. Um, so we have, um, Anna and I have looked at... Um, so we have, Anna and I have looked at, um, some information that we were sent by our drug testing company that we already ran a contractual agreement with to provide, uh, our testing. They would train our health services staff, and we would be able to do our own testing.
And what would, would those be rapid tests, or?
They'd be rapid tests, and not, they won't be the, I call them the scrubber test, because if you've ever had one, that's what they feel like. Uh, it will not be the one that goes down your nose with the, the brush on the end, it will be the, the swab, the nasal swab.
Well, you know, I, I'm just going to use my family, for example. My daughter tested positive on December the 26th, I tested positive on January the 1st.
Yes.
Um, my wife, and my youngest son tested positive on the 6th, uh, and, and yet she was negative on the 3rd. Uh, that's why I'm saying, I...
I don't think it would be a problem.
I'm not real satisfied with the, with the three to five day, I mean, I, I, I understand why, why it's in there, it's just...
Well, the CDC, like you said, they just, you know, just in the last couple of days, they've changed it, um, and, you know, we're seeing a lot of changes, so I don't think it would be a problem for us to change that into, to our plan to follow the CDC guidelines.
Well, is this going to be a fluid doc, document, or is it going to be black and white?
I think we're going to have to be flexible and be able to move back and forth.
Need to be very flexible.
Depending on, you know, what the numbers are, um, you know, and we're under the, the guidance of the Floyd County Health Department also, um, and a lot of decisions are made based upon what our numbers are, um, in our county, because our county may be different than Pike County, or Johnson County, or Barton County, um, you know, we're seeing a little fluctuation in numbers, but it looks like the counties around us are, are catching up to our numbers in the last couple of days. And we are seeing clusters, um, as I've been doing contact tracing and working on our, um, our information and data from the Health Department, we're seeing a lot of family clusters. We have one child in the family, there's four more, all four of those other children have COVID too within so many days. It seems like if you're in a household with someone that has COVID, you're very lucky if you don't get it also with this variant.
So I'd like to encourage any parent that has concerns to call you at the Board of Education.
Yes, because I, you know, I just think there's just, there's a lot of misinformation, and, you know, part of that is the fluctuation with CDC, Department of Public Health, uh, and all these guidelines that come out. I mean, that's one of the first things I do every day, is to pull the guidelines up and look at them, to see what are we doing today, or what are we going to be doing tomorrow, because they change.
Right.
A lot.
Right.
Depending on what, what the situation is.
That's true.
But they can always call me, um, you know, and to the best of my ability, I will explain. Um, if someone could get that mother to call me, um, from the Head Start program, I would love to talk to her, um, because I would like to see her and the boy go to Head Start.
I would too, that's what I was worried about.
And I think, Mr. Smallwood, you mentioned about it being a, um, living document or a fluid plan, that it has been that, and as we, uh, move forward, it will need to be so that we can reflect all the changes as they come about, and they're coming at us pretty quickly.
I think I would.
With various changes.
Well, when, me looking at it from the three to five, my concern is if Steve got it, and then at three days, me and Linda went and took the test and said, hey, we're negative, uh, and then we go out and we honeybee and decide that we're going to go to a family reunion and, uh, to a couple ballgames or whatever, thinking that we're safe. So that's my only concern, but, and that's why I'm saying, after seeing what, uh, and it was shared by a friend of mine that's, that, that, he's a nurse, uh, and I think it might have been Madison County Health, the Health Department shared it, and anyway, it said the latest things were that they were recommended to wait five days, and...
See, that's different, you know, when they first came out, they recommended three to five, uh, and now they, now they've changed, but, you know, um, like Anna said, you know, that's going to have to be a living document that, you know, we can change based upon new guidelines and new recommendations. And I'm updating Anna every day with emails and, and messages on, on the new information that I get.
Also, uh, Cindy Francis, do you have any other things you want to come down and say to be sure that we're clear, um, around special education students?
Thank you, Annette.
Can you hear? Okay. Um, I know that the governor, um, had some scenarios where people would have to wear the mask, and I know that that, uh, you know, is lifted today. However, I did reach out and I did meet, uh, have a meeting with Jackie Williams, uh, she's one of the directors at the Kentucky Department of Education concerning, um, students returning with disabilities that may not be able to wear a mask. And the guidance that she gave me was that we're bound by federal law to allow students to attend school that have disabilities, and that there may be times that doctors will not sign off saying that that student doesn't have to wear a mask. However, if it's agreed upon during an ARC meeting, and we sign off on it, you know, which would become legally binding, um, those students only have to have that listed as an accommodation inside their IEP, and then it will be our responsibility as educators to have mitigating measures in their IEP, such as verbal and physical prompts to help that student learn to wear that mask. Does that make sense?
Okay.
But, um, it would be very difficult to find, as she said, physicians that would be willing to sign a waiver saying that they don't have to wear the mask, but at the same time, we can't deny them a free and appropriate public education, because that's federal law.
I misunderstood, I thought Annette said that they probably would sign a waiver.
We haven't, uh, I know last year, whenever, uh, school returned, we did have about six students in the district, um, these are students with more severe disabilities that were unable to wear a mask, and we had no physicians that would sign the mask waiver at that point.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions as to whether we? Uh, about the... About the mask. You know, I always wear masks, we doctor surgery, we have to wear masks. Uh, I have four grandchildren, they are like three to five years old, they love the mask, it's new toys for them, and they go to, you know, they go kindergarten and preschool, they're all wearing the mask, and no problem. I think we sometimes, we parents have a problem, the kids may not have a problem. I think it's individual circumstances, and I think if a parent feels like their child has a problem, they need to contact the school and the appropriate personnel and find out if anything could be done.
See, here's my deal with that. What if the parent doesn't feel the child has a problem? They should have a choice. That's just the way I, way I look at it. You know? That's just the way I feel, it should be up to the parent, not the judge.
And my recommendation, again, is that we follow the Kentucky School Board's emergency regulation for masking at this time.
Well, maybe we ought to do a separate vote on that. Consider approved the Floyd County School District return to work plan. I need a motion to accept Ms. Shepherd's recommendation that we follow the... Okay, yes, the Kentucky School Board, uh, emergency regulation, and, uh, I need a motion. Do I have a motion? Dr. Chandler made the motion. Do I have a second? The Chair seconds. I will take a vote. Chander Varia? Yes. William Newsom?
Yes.
Steve Sloan? Keith Smallwood?
Obstand as well.
And the Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Now, at a late, at another date, Ms. Shepherd, is there possibility that we might be able, if we had more information, that we might be able to develop our own plan, if we had the liberty to do that?
Yes, with this regulation, you know, we're, we're agreeing to follow the regulation. If that changes, we may be at a different place. You know, if there's changes to that, just like there was with the governor's rescinding today. But as we stand today, it is a, uh, emergency regula, uh, regulation by the Kentucky School Board that, uh... So I think as we know, there's a lot of, of moving parts and a lot of fluidness to all of this, both in what our plan, uh, includes, and how it's a living plan, as we know moving forward, most all of this is.
I don't know why we have a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, table X and FF. So I need a motion from, uh, for A through GG, except for X and FF, which are table. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Keith made the motion, do I have a second? Dr. Varia, a second. I will do a roll call on that. Keith Smallwood?
Yeah.
Steve Sloan?
Yes.
William Newsom?
Yes.
Chander Varia?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Do we have a need for executive session? Okay, we have no need for executive session, I have, need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Steve made the motion?
Second.
Second by Keith. Anybody opposed? We stand adjourned.